Call the Planning, Zoning and Building Committee to order. Let the minute taker please call the roll.
Alderman Lazara?
Here.
Alderman Jacob?
Here.
Alderman Catalano?
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski? Alderman Roy Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Woods?
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Here.
Okay, declare a quorum. Next, can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting, March 12th, 2015? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Next, report and recommendation, approval of contract with Landmark Sign Group, the city's signed project, in the amount not to exceed $29,468. $486 dollars. That is my motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Questions? Mayor, please.
Just so we have some clarification there. There's been discussion about the street signs on Irving Park with Dale Road. So, I mean, as to what staff should be doing, clear direction. So, I want to make sure, are we asking them to go forward since we're, this is coming under budget? Because, I mean, I looked over the tapes on how we passed those motions. So, if we want those street signs, I think we need to give direction to staff to go forward with those.
Over and above?
Well, this for the contract, but, you know, it's under budget.
Right, and use the balance of the...
But I know we had some discussion, and, well, the signs aren't, we didn't get any of the, let's say, ash, elmwood, edgewood, whatever. And there was really never clear direction as to go forward. I figured, you know, now that we're talking about signs...
But do we want to add?
No, we don't have to add it to this, but I think it's somewhere here. We gotta make something so they have clear direction.
Mr. Murmurs.
Yeah, I thought, I thought what staff would like to do, and if the council agrees, then we'll do this, is take the excess money, the money that came under budget, kind of develop a ballpark which signs we think can get done within that amount of budget, and then resend out with those signs for requests for prices from companies, and then get more done this year, focusing in on those smaller street signs, and maybe get another medium-sized sign if we could, whatever best fits in with pricing is what we do, and then send that back out. That would be our idea.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
But those street signs we talked about in the past, you're saying go out and get prices. I thought we were doing those in-house because we have the equipment to do it. So, what is the purpose of our sign printing things?
Mr. Murmurs.
Contrary to popular belief, we don't have a sign-making machine. We have sign, like, cuts or templates that we order, and then we can stick sticker, blanks, and we can stick stickers on them. We don't fabricate anything like these street signs in these colors and the details. We don't, we don't do that.
Oh, okay. I thought we did. Any other questions? Alderman Jacob?
I would just like to say, I'd like to agree with the mayor, and we should look into, and we kind of all talked about this, with the balance of what Jeff's saying. I think that's what we should all...
Was that the consensus, that we'll take the extra?
Yeah, I think the consensus is we'll take, take the extra, and part of that is viewing and getting the mock-up of the sign and finding out what that is, because we might have to make some changes or modifications to it anyway. So, I think the consensus is to, whatever that we can do with the budgeted amount of money, that we would continue through the sign project with that.
Can we... Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Could we see those signs before we move forward, though? What they're supposed to look like? I mean, I just don't...
We were gonna, we, we had a discussion, we were gonna get some samples and maybe take a ride to Indiana to see what the colors and the materials that they're using.
Sounds good to me.
You know, it would be nicer if they were closer next door, but, you know, they're a little distance away.
Mayor, please?
No, that's all I was gonna say is we just, that was a question I brought up. You know, everybody liked the brown, but they put it out there. Now we got three or two new brown signs that, really not the brown we were looking for. So, we're trying, gonna try and get some metal samples with the colors so we can at least see what they look like. Otherwise, you buying them and then you don't like them, it's kind of a waste of money.
Alderman Peter Jacob?
A question for Jeff. How quickly could this get done? I mean, is this gonna take all summer? Do we get this done in a couple months, or...
Mr. Murmurs.
Well, I was just telling Ed, since John's not gonna be here, I think we, we want, we want to move fast, but we want to move methodically as well, get the color plates, do a field trip maybe, make sure we're comfortable before we move forward. So, we want to get it done, but let's take our time. So, I don't have a timeframe. All I know is let's get it done right. It'll get done soon, but let's be careful with it. Last thing we want to do is rush and then get colors we don't like or signs we don't like. So, let's not worry about timing, let's worry about making sure we do it right.
Any other questions? Can I get a roll call vote?
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
That passes. Next, request to extend the variation previously granted to the property at 331 North Oak. That is my motion.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Next, proposal to increase business license fees to accommodate annual fire prevention district inspections. Mr. Forrest or Ed, which one? The guy's gonna give us a little... Come on, I was gonna throw Ed in the deep end right away.
Oh, okay. We could do that. No, I wouldn't do that to him.
No, no. All right. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Historically, the Building Department and the Fire Prevention Bureau have made an effort to conduct business license inspections in all of our commercial and industrial occupancies, and then also, for years, we were able to do annual inspections, which allowed us to get into all these occupancies at least once a year. Over the past several years, due mainly to staffing reductions and budget constraints, the Fire Prevention Bureau has been unable to help us with this, and again, with our Building Department staff being down, we have not been able to keep up with the annual inspections either on a lot of these occupancies. Some of these haven't been inspected for four or five years. So, the Community Development Department and the Fire District has gotten together, had a few meetings, and before you, you see some proposed changes to our business license fee and renewal structure where we are slightly increasing those fees, and the thing that's a little unique about this is that the fees are being determined not only by the size of the occupancy, but the type of occupancy. The reason that we're doing that is to go into and inspect a regular business or a mercantile occupancy, you know, certain things you look for, but if you're going in to inspect a high-hazard occupancy, it's gonna take much longer, it's gonna be a little more specialized. So, those occupancies will pay a little bit more for their business license renewal fees. I don't believe that any of these fees are going to cause undue hardship on any of the businesses. We're not gonna see people leaving town, but what it is going to do is make some funding available for the Fire Prevention Bureau to allow them to increase their staff where we can start getting back and doing these annual inspections in all the buildings.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
I'm going back many years.
How many?
I don't, I don't know. Probably 10 years since I was there. I remember a discussion when we had this with the city, when I was with the Fire Department, that we would do more inspections. The Fire Department would be doing inspections. Is the Fire Department increasing their staff because they're gonna be doing inspections? Am I understanding this correctly?
I believe the Fire Chief is here. He may be able to give you more specifics, but that's my understanding. They're going to have some funding available to allocate to their staff to make them available to go out and do some inspections. I mean, 10 years ago, the time that you're referring to, we had three part-time fire inspectors working out of the Building Department.
But I also, when I was with the Fire Department, I also added manpower in the Fire Bureau for inspections at that time, too.
And that was 10 years ago, so that's why I'm saying...
Right, so, I don't know what the Fire Department has done, if they have decreased that, if the same amount of people are there, are they gonna, are these gonna get inspected? I mean, that was the reason why I did it 10 years, voted for it 10 years ago.
Mr. Forrest?
I think that's an outstanding question for the chief.
You want to come up first?
Well, before, before he comes up, I mean, that's the intent, that's the program.
Correct.
So, it's really not a question. We're going to do it.
Yes.
So, if he doesn't have staff, then this, we'll have to get staff.
Well, in return, I want to make sure that they're gonna get inspected. If you're gonna charge a person for a fee...
But that's what we just said, so that we would inspect all the buildings.
I've heard that many times up here, that we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it. I mean, we got business, we got houses, apartments that are supposed to get inspected. You give them a fee every year, how much is the fee for that?
For the rental properties? If it's a multi-tenant building, it's 150 and then $50 a unit.
Okay, $50 a unit, and they're supposed to be inspected annual, right?
Not every unit, no. That was never the intent.
But they're, you're being billed $50 every year...
Correct.
...for these inspections, and we're not doing inspections. So, they pay the $50, what do you get for $50? You don't even get a thank you, maybe, you might get a thank you, but come and inspect the building. If you're gonna pay for it, you gotta deliver it. Same thing with the Fire Department. If they're gonna, if they want the fee, I don't mind giving them the $30, but we're gonna, we're gonna deliver it. We have to deliver it. It's a service, we have to supply it.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I would tell you that, I was part of that meeting with the Fire District and Jeff was part of the meeting, too. Their goal, their goal is to, the Fire District's goal is to hire more inspections to do it. But just keep in mind, the Fire Department is not doing every business in town. They cannot do every business in town. So, it's gonna have to be, the Building Department's gonna have to take half of them, and the Fire District's gonna have to take half of them. No department heads, either department could do the whole entire city of fire inspections through this whole town by themselves. The reason why this was brought to our attention, is that was brought back up again, is there are businesses out there, and I'm not, don't think I'm picking on businesses either, but we are doing, there is remodeling going on in these buildings without permits, and this is going to give us a better eye on what's going on in both parties. Fire District finds a problem out there, they're gonna notify the Building Department that they did this ad on, then the Building Department's gonna come back. Building Department does a fire inspection during their business, they're gonna notify the police, Fire Department, and go back and take care of it. The point is, exact words that was addressed here, we are not doing inspections here. We are charging for them, and I feel that this plan that was put in place by both staff, this plan will work. If this plan don't work, then it's off the table, and then we lower, we take it out. But we have to give it a shot to do it. We talked about having the same documents, therefore, the Building Department has a piece of paper for their inspection, the Fire Department has a different inspection. There was talk about doing one form to make sure it's right, therefore, they use the same form. I think this is, I'll start to get what you started in the Fire District to bring it up again. I think it's gonna work. I could say, no, it ain't gonna work, but until we pass this and move forward with this, where are our businesses out there and houses and all that doing stuff without permit, and we losing revenue in that part, too? So, in this case, I would make a motion to pass this as staff recommendation. That is my motion.
Mr. Forrest?
I do have one other comment. Business licenses are typically based on a calendar year, so what happens is January and February, everybody renews their business licenses, and then all of a sudden, you've got, you know, several hundred inspection requests. I think what we need to do as part of this program is, I mean, the business license fee renewal would still be due calendar year, January 1st, but the inspections can be staggered as to when these occupancies actually moved into their, into their units. If they moved in in July, they can figure their annual reinspection's gonna be in July rather than try and get everything done in January and February. So, that should allow for the staff to be able to spread these inspections over the year.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
If you're saying that this is gonna work, I'm gonna want some proof to this council. I would want a report quarterly from the Fire Department and the Building Department together, showing reports that you're inspecting these businesses and how many businesses we have comparing to that. And I'd like to do it on a one-year trial basis to see how it's gonna work. And if it can, if it works out, fine, I don't mind keeping it in.
Mr. Forrest?
Staff can include the number of business license inspections in our monthly report.
Not staff, not City of Wooddale. You're doing a joint thing with the...
Fire District.
With the Fire District.
I would think they'd be agreeable to that.
So, if they're agreeable with that, and try it on a one-year trial basis to see how it goes, or maybe to, you want two years, I'll give you two years. But I'd rather use one year to see how it goes, and if it's fine, then we continue with it.
Mayor, please.
Yeah, real quick, I mean, I know both staffs have discussed it and whatnot, and I'm gonna have to agree with Mr. Forrest that we've got, I believe, close to 700 businesses in town, and you're not gonna do 700 inspections December, January and February. But throughout the year, if you set some type of schedule, it'd probably be more like 50 to 60 a month, you know, two or three a day, you're gonna have people going out. Let's face it, they're also doing other work, so, as long as everybody's okay with, you know, somebody may get an inspection in December and somebody else is gonna get it in January, so, begin the year, end of the year. Just make sure, you know, we're not, I don't want to hear, oh, you guys can get it done by March 1st. That's not gonna happen, so... Right, and, and we don't need to see all the reports, it just, this list was done this month. Like, we get the monthly reports every month, and for the summary, the council, and Mr. Cage will say, these, these were the ones that were inspected that time, this month. And that'll be simple enough.
Mr. Forrest, let me ask you a question, because I'm... So, as part of the business license process, are we supposed to inspect the buildings?
In a perfect world, yes.
Okay, so, in my world, that's what I'm thinking. There isn't an option. That's why I was, it doesn't matter what the debate is, we're supposed to, and I would imagine that there's some liability attached to the fact that we do or don't do them in a timely or non-timely manner. Don't need to debate that right now, but, so the goal is to inspect every business every year as much as we can. If there are seven, 700 businesses, that's 13.4 businesses a week for quick math between the two departments, are we capable of doing that?
I don't know who would do the .4, but the 13, we could probably do.
Wow. Maybe the best inspector, he could pick up the slack and he could get that .4.
Yes.
I mean, that's the way I'm looking at it, that, I mean, this is something that has to be done. It seems to be a number that we can do if organized, right? And with the help of the Fire Department, so...
Yeah.
Mr. Forrest?
And I think it will work. Remember, the council did approve another full-time building inspector for the Building Safety Division this year, and we do have a part-time staff member who's originally came on to do the rental inspections. He's kind of being underutilized right now, so we may be able to use him as the, doing some of the business license inspections as well.
Okay, good. Alderman Jacob?
Mr. Forrest, just a question as far as inspectors, will there be two inspectors for every, will someone from the city and someone from the fire? Or if the city people could do the same thing as the Fire Department, and they could do the same thing as the city inspectors?
Mr. Forrest?
Yeah, they could do similar inspections. They wouldn't necessarily have to both go into the same building and do the same inspection.
So, it would be either the Fire Department or the city could do the whole inspection and just one person go there?
Correct, and if there's violations found, or, again, if the staff goes in, even if they can't necessarily put their finger on a particular violation, but if they're uncomfortable with something, then they could call the Building Department staff in. We would send then a, an inspector in and then kind of work through it. I do agree with the comment Alderman Eugene Wesley said earlier, what we're going to discover are projects that have been done or in the process of being done without permits and inspections, and those can greatly change the occupancy of a building exiting, so it is important to find those.
Alderman Jacob?
With that, I'd like to second the motion for Alderman Wesley.
Which one? We have a motion and a second. Any other questions?
Eugene made the motion.
Right. Alderman Roy Wesley?
Are we not putting a time, seeing how this is gonna go?
Well, it has to be done. That, that was the point I was trying to make earlier. There aren't, there isn't an option not to do the job.
That's right.
So, we can reassess it to change what we're doing, but we can't eliminate what we're doing.
Well, then...
If that's your question.
I, I like, are we, are we gonna put in a motion that we're gonna get reports on seeing how this is gonna go? Are we gonna, so...
Mr. Murmurs?
We will certainly be giving you the reports. When we had our meetings, Alderman E. Wesley can attest, we talked about reporting and how we were gonna have a log and keep track of it, and you'll be getting these reports, yeah.
Okay, and I...
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Part of meeting, part of meeting is, when this program does get off the board, our, our plan was to have the Building Department and the Fire District meet every three months to see where we go with this project, and, and I'm sure they will be more than happy to give an update every three months on how this project's going. I think this project's gonna work. I have total confidence in the leadership over at the Building, uh, Fire Department. I have total confidence in the Building Department that this program will work. We just have to make, we just have to trust both departments in our city that this is gonna work. So, I'm, I'm all for this, so... Thank you.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Mr. City Manager, would you give a full report next year of the total, at this time, next year, and all the businesses, not the whole, the numbers of businesses that were inspected and what weren't inspected?
Mr. Murmurs?
I'll give you a report, and we'll make it in color as well, so...
Okay. I'm done now, since I got in color.
First, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Next items to be considered at future meetings. Alderman Catalano?
Yeah, I don't know if this is the right committee, chief.
It's the right, it's the right committee.
Right committee, chief. Could you give us a status on the, what we talked about a few months back about the radar, the speed? I know it'd be public, it's not on... It's the radar speed signs that we talked about.
Actually, today, we tried to deploy the speed trailer, and we're having problems with the battery. Went into the garage, so they're trying to fix it today. So, hopefully, soon we'll have it out, so... And then we're, we're gonna have remote deployable signs, too. We've looked into a couple different companies, but they can be put on a post, and those will be out later this spring, that we can move to each street without having to use the full-speed trailer, too, so...
They're gonna be solo?
Go ahead.
Or battery-operated?
That's correct.
Okay.
And the battery life will be about seven days, so... But, yeah, today, we were just trying to deploy it on Dunley, and there's a problem with the batteries in the speed trailer, so it's over at the garage.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? I make a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We adjourn.
I'd like to call the Public Works Committee to order. Roll call taker, note the same people are here. Make a motion to approve minutes of the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Public Works Committee, regular meeting for, okay, I'm sorry, we just did that. Report and recommendation, report and recommendation for approval of a three-year contract with Senargo for sludge removal at the treatment plant. That is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Peter?
Just one question for Mr. York. Do we always use the same company, or do we bid this out every once in a while, or...
Go ahead.
As far as I understand, we've always used Senegro. Senegro is probably the leader in this area for this type of work. I did become aware of another company, kind of on the outskirts of this, of this field, but right now, Senegro, we use them, and they're, they're always probably the most competitive company out there that does this type of work. Any, any municipality around here that does farm application, land application of sludge use a Senegro, I task, they use a Senegro. We've used them, I believe, for approximately, probably 20-some years, and, but this is the, there's been an increase, it's our first increase in about six years.
Go ahead, Peter. I guess my only question is, you know, I want to make sure we're, that we're paying a reasonable fee here, and that somebody's not gonna be 5,000 less, or there's other people in the industry that do this type of work.
Go ahead.
No, this, this company is probably the most reputable company, and probably the, has a, has a really good price point, so I don't feel that there'll be any other, there's any other companies that would challenge this price point.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
And that passes. Report on the final design of the Ward 4 sidewalk project on Hemlock and Edgewood. I'm gonna turn that over to you, Mr. York.
Yes, a couple months ago, probably before Christmas, we had brought forward design plans or ideas on doing the Hemlock and the Edgewood sidewalk projects, and to do them in coordination with each other due to the, the size of, the Hemlock one originally was a, is a smaller project than the Edgewood one, but to bring them together for, for management of scale, so we can get good pricing. Final design was developed by Robinson Engineering and was given to me a couple weeks ago, and at that time, we decided that we needed to bring it back to the committee for some discussion. There are several project, or several issues with this project. Most, the biggest one is the location of the sidewalk. When subdivisions are, are built initially, normally, you know, undergrounds go in first, and then streets go in, and then sidewalks go in, and then basically, everything else is built around at those, at that grade level, whether or not it goes up or down or whatever, but they're based upon the, the elevations of the sidewalk. Due to ADA requirements, and a sidewalk cannot be more than a 2% grade, now introducing this, we'll call it a flat piece of land into a hillside, which is basically what we're doing along these two sub, or these two streets within Ward 4, we've run into several issues, most notably going on to private property. Thirty-two of the homes on Edgewood out of 80, and four of the homes out of 10 on Hemlock, we're gonna have to have some sort of access agreement with them in order for us to go on private property. The purpose of this is that we need to bring this flat piece of land in the middle of a, of a driveway that has a, has an inclined plane to it, and then also readjust the grading of their driveway back onto private property, so it's not like a straight goes up right after it goes to the sidewalk, it goes straight up a hill. We gotta have a gradual grade. Introducing that to all those homes and having 40% of the homes have an issue with that, we have to go out and get each of those homes to sign off on access agreement. We have not done that yet. Doing that would require every single person on each of those given blocks to sign the access agreement, or the sidewalk project would, would not be a feasible project. The second...
Good, Mayor.
And there was...
And there was one of the questions I asked, I was wanting to know, so if we don't have a hundred percent compliance, are you telling me the project's dead?
Go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, I mean, with that, if you don't have a hundred percent compliance, say, say every driveway's at a five percent grade, okay, and you're coming down at a sidewalk, excuse me, that has a two percent grade, if the house, one of the houses at two eighty-four Edgewood does not decide to go along with the program, you're gonna be coming along with a, a flat section of concrete, then you're gonna hit this driveway that's gonna be sloped at a five percent grade, six percent grade, and then on the other side of it, you're gonna go back to a flat one, okay? You have ADA issues, you have safety issues, because you're going from a flat one to a curb, to a, I mean, that's great, but it's, it goes from flat to semi, semi-slanted.
Matt, have we, have we taken any kind of survey or petition on Edgewood to see if this project is even doable because of this?
We have, as, as far as I understand it, and going back and talking to Amanda and other people that, that would get that type of information, we believe that there are, has been no survey that has been done on Edgewood to, one, a petition that residents have asked for it, and, two, a normal survey that we would send out to hope that fifty-one percent of the people would, would want this, and we would move to this, to this status of, of a project and to this design part of it. So, as of right now, I do not believe any of that has taken place.
So, nothing right now that we have on hand that people on Edgewood want sidewalks? What about, for now, separating the two projects, the Hemlock and the Edgewood projects?
The, the two projects were put together for economies of scale. If those two projects wanna be separated due to other economic reasons, obviously, this project came in at about three to four hundred thousand dollars over the, over what our budgeted price was, so that could happen.
Mayor.
There was a survey done way before Matt's time, and some of the council members here. I think it was about fifty-five or fifty-eight percent yes, and the rest were no's. So, that's why I'm asking the questions. If we have a couple of residents that were no's, are they gonna shoot us down here and we can't do the project? Or, it's in the parkway, we have the right to go through the parkway and put the sidewalk in, but now, you put in the sidewalk, it doesn't match their driveway, and I asked them legal questions. So, if he's got an inch and a half lip from our sidewalk to their driveway, are we creating trip hazards? Can the city be liable? All this, unfortunately, you know, I asked those questions just recently, and, you know, we're gonna need some legal opinion, and I was told the engineers will be here, they may be able to answer this stuff. But, I can tell you, that Edgewood street, that one was years ago, and we went for grant money, we didn't get the grant money. It was one of those unfunded projects forever, and that's why we moved them up to get it in. But, at that time, you remember what the percentage was, it was about fifty-five, fifty-eight percent yes, and, and the, so thirty, over thirty percent were no's, almost forty percent no's. So, and I'm like, well, if somebody, are we done? Is this project over? We, it's killed? And that was my question, and those are all legal questions, and I don't know if staff has those answers.
Go ahead. I don't have the legal questions, I don't have the answers to the legal parts of the questions. And maybe if Aaron or Mark from Robinson, Aaron funded, you guys all know, Mark was a, was a designer on the project, maybe they can answer some of that, that offset issue.
And Matt's done a good job of explaining these, you know, the driveway slope here, then a flat sidewalk, then the driveway slope. Part of the other concern we're worried about is, you know, the last thing we want with a, a new sidewalk, which everyone would believe would be a benefit, is to have residents have their car bottom out because of the changing slopes in the, in the driveway to the sidewalk. And that's another reason that, at least on, it looks like on thirty-two of these homes on Edgewood, we do believe that to make that a smoother transition, we would need to get beyond the right-of-way, onto the private property, in some cases, twenty, thirty feet. So, it, it'll be significant impacts to some, now, on the plus side, those, those driveway, or those homeowners would essentially get a new driveway for, for a good length of their drive in order to make it work. But, you know, we do have those concerns about meeting the ADA standard, which is, Matt mentioned, we have to, we really can't have that be more than two percent. Some of those drives existing are eight, nine, ten percent. And so, it, it requires quite a length of transition in order to make it work right.
Mayor.
And that's why the extra cost, that's why we're coming out, your estimate's at five hundred and fifty thousand, where we originally budgeted two hundred thousand.
Yeah, part of it is the driveways.
Because we have to do this extra driveway work.
Part of it is also because the, the way the location of the sidewalk is, in order to minimize things like tree damage, in order to minimize the impact of having the sidewalk appear that it's in the middle of the resident's front yard. If we were to put it all the way, you know, one foot inside the right-of-way, which is normally where sidewalks would go, some of that caused, some of that would be mitigated. But, where we're, where we're doing that in order to lessen the appearance impact on the residents, it's causing us to relocate, I believe it's forty-four different drainage structures that are within that location. So, so that's act, the drainage structures plus the driveways are, would have driven up the cost.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Right, otherwise, you're just zipping down, I don't know how many trees you have to cut down, and that was a big non-starter for a lot.
Right, and, and I think, you know, when we initially did the design on Hemlock, we had the discussion with the council back in the fall. And, and we ultimately met Alderman Eugene Wesley out in the, in the field, and we walked exactly where, you know, we thought the best place for the sidewalk would be in order to minimize that, again, that appearance that the sidewalk was, was right on people's front porches practically. And so, that's really where, you know, some of these costs came into, and with, with both the driveways and the drainage structures.
Eugene?
I think the whole thing is with this, is the reason why we went out there and look at this, at, at the council meeting, the first proposal was, the design was that, that sidewalk was right next to the curb, and that was a safety issue that was turned. So, since then, we, we did go out there, and we did look at, and there are structures that need to be moved. My whole concern about this, I think Hemlock is, is a go, because that's an intergovernmental agreement that we are working with the park district to do. Those residents over there, talking to those residents, they want the sidewalk. And I feel that we won't have a problem with those two people, or three people, to get that done. So, Hemlock, I'm in favor of going forward. There's some legal questions still on Edgewood that we need to address on, on, on issues that was raised. The liability, the, the cost of that project. Is there, and I knew, I, I knew we did go for a grant for that. And I, I met with Matt today before the meeting about this. There was a grant out there, and there was a survey done. Somehow, the survey, Matt couldn't find the survey, and I agree, it was done. My concern with this one is changing, are we going to get eighty-three or fifty-three homes agreed to go on their property? If I was a betting man, I would say probably not. Fifty-three people going to give you permission, go on their driveway, or give them property, I don't know. They may be one of those that didn't want a sidewalk over there at all, I don't know. My, my other follow-up with that is, whatever happened, did we resubmit for that grant again? Or do we just say, we didn't get the grant, and we push it away?
Actually, tonight's the first I've heard about the grant.
Oh, yeah, there was a grant.
I never mind, it was about six years ago.
Jeff?
I know we had resubmitted multiple times, at least two or three times. I don't think we submitted last year, but it, the reason we stopped submitting is because it didn't really qualify, it wasn't gonna meet criteria, and we're just not gonna get a grant for the project.
Matt, if we separate these two, would we have to basically go out for a new bid for Hemlock? Go ahead.
We haven't gone out for any bids yet. That's why we're here tonight, because in con, in conference with Mark and with Aaron, we're, we were pretty much ready to go to bid with this, with this double project, with these two streets. Now, it was broken up, a lot of the information, and I'm sure Mark can, or Aaron can explain this a little bit better than I can, but I'm, I'm pretty sure within a couple of weeks, we could be ready to go for bidding on, for just the Hemlock portion of it. We still, though, there are four homes on Hemlock that we have access agreement issues that we need to iron out prior to, I would suggest doing that prior to going out for any bids. Because if we do have an issue, and we can't get access agreements with these homes, the project is dead in the water, and we just wasted a bunch of money on bid process.
Peter?
Mr. York, I know we have sidewalk, we wanted to do a sidewalk on both sides, so how many? You said four homes, is it three on one side and then one on the other side?
Yeah, it's a three, it's three on the side of where the park's at. And then, there's one, and we may even be able to get away with not doing it on that other one. It was real close, we may be able to, you know, fudge a little bit and not get on to their property.
Go ahead, Pete.
I guess the other question would be, is if we had a problem with the one on the one side, the three are on the same side as the park, so, I mean, could we even just do that side if we had to?
Matt?
Yeah, that's up to, whatever you guys want us to do is what we'll do. I mean, that's a, that's another feasible option, yes.
Roy?
The survey on Edgewood was, Edgewood was done, how long ago?
Six or seven years.
Six or seven years ago, you got new people over there. I say let's split it, and I'll make that motion to split it, to do Hemlock now, and to go back to these people and ask them about, for permission to be on their property. And then, put it in next year's budget, and go from there.
A second on that?
Second.
Second. Mayor.
I got, just, this is a, probably a question for Aaron. And, you know, I'd like to move forward as well, but my question is, if we send out a petition, or whatever, not the petition, but this, no, the permission to go on their property, and would that take a couple of weeks? This may be Matt and Jeff's question. So, if we get a, if we get a response in, let's say, April twenty-first, because the whole, the whole thing here was to bid both projects together to get a larger project, get a better pricing, and the whole deal. Is three weeks gonna be that critical, or, to the project for us here?
No, I don't think so. Especially if we, if we just do Hemlock, that's a relatively, it's only one block on Hemlock. The total cost for that project is about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and I don't foresee that, that the construction would take longer than six weeks.
Right, but then, that's my question, is if we wait three weeks and then go out to bid, maybe we get lucky, and maybe we have everybody respond and say, you know what? Because some people are gonna look at it, you know what? My driveway's pretty rough, and I really need to get it done. Now, they're gonna get about twenty, thirty feet of it, maybe they got a sixty-foot driveway. Well, naturally, while their contractors are out there, hey, how much to do the other twenty feet? They're gonna get new driveways, they're gonna get, they're gonna get some pricing, and they're gonna get a brand-new driveway. So, they may be, I'm just, is it feasible for us to wait to two or three weeks, or should we move?
It's feasible, because the, the one other aspect along Hemlock is that we still need the IGA with the park district to be completed, too. So, we would hope that the IGA and the easement with the park, as well as the coordination with these handful of residents, could go on at the same time, and, and we'd be, you know, probably get bids back for you, for the council to consider, and may.
Okay, so are you suggesting that we wait before we move with the Hemlock project?
I, I think we were talking about at least having, at least a coordination with the residents, although Eugene Wesley, Alderman Wesley mentioned that you felt that those residents were positive about the project?
Go ahead, Eugene.
I believe, I met with the people in Hemlock, he's flasher. Now...
We have a motion.
Right. I believe, I'm almost one hundred percent sure, we'll double check, that those people in Hemlock agree with it. I, I believe the mayor's asking that, if we sent out the survey to Edgewood...
Oh, I, I was under the impression it was Hemlock.
I think that's, I think that's where the mayor's coming back, that he wants to send the questioner out to Edgewood and see if they are looking...
Oh, I, I misinterpreted, I apologize.
Yeah, I, I believe that's the mayor's asking.
My thing is, if, if we can get this done, get the permission in two to three weeks, then we go out to bid for both projects all at once, if we get it. That was my question to you, is it feasible, or should we forget about it and stay with the motion that hand? Because we have a motion to do Hemlock.
Okay.
Correct, that was a motion.
Right, the sufferer.
First and the second.
I, I would ask, maybe defer to Matt in terms of how quickly that...
Go ahead, Matt.
Staff would do the survey.
I, I don't know how fast we could do that. I mean, I know that we can, it's, we've had discussions with legal already. We could probably get something within the next week or two from them on how to address each, this issue. But then, how long do you wait for them to get back to us? And then, if we don't get all, everybody back, so...
Yeah, Pete, go ahead.
My question, well, what I, I'd like to add into the motion that we had, if we get the permission from the three on the side of the park, and the one person on the other side of the park, the other side of, on Hemlock doesn't agree, that we at least do the side, the one side on the park. So, I don't wanna be held up by one person on the other side of the street opposite of the park, 'cause, it's like, would like to add that into the motion.
Mayor.
Well, the motion is to go with Hemlock, so naturally, they have to get the okay from those three people. One, one out of those three people might say no, but maybe Alderman Wesley, I think you said, they talk to him, so there'll be a go. And then, on the other side, right, it, the motion was to move forward with Hemlock.
Right.
And, and follow up. That's why, the only reason I asked about Edgewood is if, you know, is it gonna, but the way it sounds, by the time we get legal and this and that, we're looking another month and a half, we're gonna, we're gonna waste a lot of time. We might not get either sidewalk done.
Art?
I, I just wanted to, a couple of the road projects we've done in town where we've run into these things, they weren't thought of or anticipated, or things got worse. Whenever somebody's driveway was involved and we had to go on their property, we spent how many weeks just talking to one person? I don't think it's conceivable to get thirty-one people to agree to get this done. That would be nice, but the reality is, odds of that happening are, you know, a hundred to one.
Right, so, you know, let's do a roll call.
Take what we have, move ahead, we've gotta deal working with the park.
Yeah.
This is part of the park district's strategic plan, they're gonna do a lot of work there. So, I, I think we'd need to move forward with Hemlock.
Gotcha.
So, was Alderman Wesley's motion is, we'll do Hemlock, and just kinda on the side, start querying the, the residents on Edgewood, just to see how that could go in the future, but not hold up Hemlock.
Right. Go ahead, Mayor.
Not, we're not doing another survey, we're basically going to those thirty-two residents and asking for permission to go on their property.
Yeah, but not holding up Hemlock.
Right, not, not holding up Hemlock, right.
Right. Right, 'cause we're separating Hemlock.
Hemlock's going forward, Edgewood is not.
Right.
We're just gonna ask for the permission, if we get it, we get it, if we don't, if we get it, we go forward, if we don't get it, then we got a different problem.
On Hemlock.
On Hemlock, right.
Go forward with Hemlock.
Yes.
And do the survey.
They're gonna send a permission letter, not a survey, we're just gonna ask for permission to go on their property.
Why don't you do a survey at the same time? That was six years ago.
But if you're gonna get the permission from those thirty-two.
You changed your mind after six years, maybe, I don't know.
Why do the same survey?
Go ahead, Jeff, go ahead.
I'm not quite sure if we need a new survey, I mean, the council, we, we paid for the design, we did the design. We already decided we wanted to do the sidewalk, so I think we're just doing to see access agreements.
Okay.
Okay, but we're not holding off?
No.
We're moving forward with Hemlock, no matter what?
Well, right, we have to, we still have to vote on that.
In the event that they get really lucky and everybody says yes.
I'm in my motion for what, what should he, Mr. Jacobs want?
What was that?
He wanted something different.
You were already okay with your motion.
Yeah, but he wanted to add those three houses.
No, 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 those are on Hemlock.
Yeah, that's not an Edgewood.
We're not adding those.
Why you bring it up?
Okay, Pete, go ahead.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. York, on Hemlock, there are four houses, three on the side where the park is, one across the street. So, what I'm asking is, if we get the three on the side of the park, that we, if the guy on the other side of the street says no, we continue and at least put the sidewalk on the side of the park, am I correct or no?
Yes, that, that'll be, as long as Alderman Roy Wesley agrees with that as part of their motion, that is what we will work to do.
Well, that's what he tried doing, and then the mayor said no, so I'm just confused.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Which?
Basically, he made the motion to move forward on Hemlock. So, they have to go out and get permission from all four homes. If all three say yes, and then the one guy says no on the other side, well, they're not gonna get a sidewalk, but this, this side is gonna get it. That's what the motion was, correct? That's what the motion was, correct?
Right?
Yes.
Okay.
So, do we know which egg is flying?
I got it. Okay, let's do a, let's do a roll call, please.
Alderman Lozaro.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
And that passes. Okay, report and recommendation, approval of partial payment request number five to swallow construction for the Ward Two capital improvement phase one in an amount not to exceed a hundred and ten thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars and forty-five cents. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Lozaro.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
And that passes. Matt, just, um, one question on that really quick, how much is left on that, uh, that contract?
Um, right now, there, it looks like there's about two hundred thousand dollars left to pay out, um, and, and then there's also the hundred and ninety thousand dollars in retainage that's remaining, so there, we, there are about four hundred thousand dollars, um, left to, to pay out.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Since you brought that up, this payout, was this approved by what engineer?
This was, this was approved by Trotter.
Okay?
Okay.
All right, uh, items to be considered at future meetings, anyone? No, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Meeting adjourned.
I'll call the finance committee, I'll make note that the same, uh, Alderman Roy Wesley left the room, so he'll be back in a few, so, uh, I only have one item on the agenda and I'll turn that over to, uh, oh, I need a motion to approve the minutes.
I make the motion.
There's a second, all correction changes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Oppose, I'll oppose. Okay, do you want to take it?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, yeah, before you tonight, um, staff's making a recommendation to, uh, enter into a five-year agreement with Sickich to provide auditing services for the city. A little bit of history on this, back in February two thousand and twelve, uh, the city extended Wolf and Company for an additional three years, but at the same time passed a policy that the incumbent firm would be ineligible to bid and that the new contract would be a five-year agreement with no, with no extension. Uh, so with that being the policy, uh, that's in place, uh, that's how staff sent out the, the RFP. Uh, we received the bids last Tuesday, so nine days ago, opened them up, compiled the bid tab, um, that you had included in the packet, um, and going through everything, the base audit, single audit engagements. Uh, Sickich did come out to be the lowest bidder, uh, on the total value. Uh, Miller Cooper was second, uh, Eder Casella third, uh, and so on. Um, there were two firms, Wolf, as I mentioned, uh, was ineligible to bid as the incumbent. Lauterbach and Amen, they do the police pension fund accounting, so there's a conflict of interest there, uh, auditing their own work, um, so they, uh, they declined. Uh, Client Hall, we sent it to you, but they had, uh, quote, scheduling issues and then Kruhl Horwath, uh, did not appear to provide five-year pricing, it's approved a one-year price, uh, so, uh, they were knocked out of the box, uh, at that time as well, so, um, this time I guess I'll, I'll take any questions if there are any.
Mayor, please. Brad, you said Wolf was automatically disqualified because they were with us already?
Correct.
Mr. Jacob?
Uh, Brad, uh, just one question, if you could maybe, I asked you this question earlier, but maybe, as everybody up here knows, what's the difference between the base audit and the single audit?
Sure, the, the base audit is what, um, you guys get every year, the, the CAFRA that you get with all the statistics in the back, um, they, they look at the entire city, uh, audit the entire city, go through that materiality levels, things of that nature. The single audit, um, you may see the phrase, the A-one thirty-three circular thrown around occasionally, so current law says that after you expend more than five hundred thousand in federal funds, you have to do a single audit where they come in and look at just that program in, in a complete vacuum and at a significantly higher level of detail. And there's also other programs, um, after that, you don't have to spend fifty thousand at that point, but if you spend certain amounts, you have to get them looked at again. Um, so this year, this most recent fiscal year, we actually had three major programs, we had the treatment plant, the IEP alone, we had the grade separation program with Dylan Irving, and we had the, uh, the FEMA hazard mitigation buyout programs. So, this year, we're gonna have the treatment plant again at the intersection, uh, again. Next year, we're gonna have the treatment plant and, and the intersection, and depending on how long the intersection program goes, that could even go, uh, yet another year and that's, uh, that's all we know right now, um, you know, if we get future federal funding, uh, you know, if we fund a corridor or regular projects, that would continue to, to roll forward those single audit needs, um, in future years as well.
Any other questions? Mr. Jacob?
And when you, when they did the bids, I mean, it looks like you multiplied it out for the single audit to come to total cost, so you kinda estimated that based on the projects you just said?
Correct, and they did provide pricing, uh, each year, uh, for the single audits.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I'll make a motion because I have confidence in staff on this, in finance, because he